I'd like to call the order. Our City of Carson Housing Authority Successor Agency Public Finance City Council Agenda. According to the American Disabilities Act of 1990, if you require disability-related modification or accommodation to attend or participate in this meeting, including auxiliary aid service, please call the city clerk's office, 310-952-1720, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. The rules are decorum are printed on the screen, so I don't have to say that. Public information to the public. The public may address the members of the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the city council or any items on the agenda of the city council during the designated public comment periods. There will be two oral communication sessions, one for agendized items, comments about items on the agenda, and the other for non-agendized items. Comments about items not on the agenda. The oral communication portion on the agenda is limited to a duration of one hour unless otherwise approved by the city council. Comment times is normally three minutes, depending on the number of speakers. Public viewing available live stream on the city's website. The meeting will be streamed live over the Internet via www.carsonca.gov or YouTube Cable TV Spectrum, Channel 35, or AT&amp;T, Channel 99. If you are not able to attend the meeting in person, public comments can be submitted before the meeting via email. Public comments can be emailed to the cityclerk@carsonca.gov. The cutoff time to submit any email communication is 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Written comments can be dropped off at city clerk's office. The cutoff time to submit any written communication is 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Written comments dropped off at the city clerk's office or any email received not to be read aloud at the council meeting will be circulated to the city council and incorporated in the record. Call to order, City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Dear.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Davis Holmes. Thank you.
Flag salute. I will... Councilmember Dear, do the flag salute.
If you would please stand, if you're able to stand, and put your right hand over your heart and face the American flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to ask Pastor K.W. Tulis, our pastor who's supposed to do the invocation. He is caught in traffic, which is Pastor Vada Hedman from Reach the City Church, new pastor in the city. But Pastor Tulis will pitch it in his stead.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you again for allowing us to come together again. We thank you for the purpose of this gathering on tonight. We pray, God, your blessings over our elected officials, our mayor, our mayor pro tem, our council, our treasurer, our city clerk. We pray blessings over the staff of the City of Carson as we move into 2025. We pray, God, that you allow blessings and overflow upon this city. We pray blessings over every resident, all those who are tuned in on tonight. We pray your strength. We pray prosperity. We pray great works, greater works this year in 2025. We ask all these blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our city attorney, Madam City Clerk, is there any comments on closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. City Attorney, would you report on closed session for us?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel in the pending litigation matter of Cam Carson versus Carson Reclamation Authority, case number... in City of Carson, case number 20STCV16461. The council will further meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to confer with its negotiators regarding labor negotiations with AIM, CPSA, and AFSMI Local 809 and 1017, as well as unclassified management. Lastly, the council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 or D3 and E1 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in five cases. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. We should be back about 6:10, 6:15 at the latest. All right, we're going to recess in two... Then the mayor's voice will be back. Let's reconvene after closed session. Where's our city attorney? City Manager, I think you can give us our report to report out of closed session. Just for the record, our mayor was in closed session. Our other councilwoman, Councilwoman Arlene Rojas, was in closed session. Councilwoman Arlene Rojas is... Everyone knows she is Los Angeles Police Department, and because of the fire, she may be deployed. So she's to the Palisades at the present moment, so she's trying to figure out if she's going to be deployed. So that's why she's still in the back. So if she doesn't come back out, she'll have to go to her other job.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem. There was a closed session in regards to conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. A closed session was held pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D1 to confer with legal counsel. There was no action taken. And the conference with a labor negotiator, city council, a closed session was held pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 with city manager, human resources director, and the director of finance. No case was taken, or no action was taken in conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. A closed session was held pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D2 and D3 and E1 because there was significant exposure to litigation in five cases and no report or action taken. That's the conclusion of the report.
Thank you, City Manager. At this time, we're going to have a report from Captain Norman from the Carson Sheriff's Department.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I hope each and every one of you had a wonderful holiday season, and I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Hilton, for meeting with me and believe our meeting was very productive and provided insight on addressing areas of concern for you and the Carson constituents. Look forward to meeting with Councilmember Bogotia Rojas and also Councilmember Dear. The events attended throughout the month of December included deputies attended several holiday events throughout the City of Carson. Some of the notable events included on December 17th. We attended the swearing-in ceremony before Madam Mayor, as well as Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Hicks on December 20th. The deputies, Carson deputies participated in an annual competitive basketball game with Carson 411, a nonprofit organization established here in Carson at Veterans Park. On December 21st, we... Carson Station Community Relations hosted an annual toy drive and holiday senior gift card giveaway at Carson Station. We gave approximately 500 children toys, and 60 Target gift cards were provided for seniors within the community. In addition, Denny's Restaurant was also onsite donating breakfast pancakes to attendings and young children. One of the notable events that happened during the last month, or actually within the last couple days, is that the Carson Computer Automated Dispatch System, which is our CAS system, was unable to log on here at Carson. Our calls for service were not affected. However, it did create a slight delay as far as the response due to calls for service had to be voiced out. In addition, at no time were, I can mention, the calls for service and emergent calls for service affected. The CAS system was back up and fully operational on January 3rd, 2025. I'd like to share a few statistics as far as what's going on. There has been a decrease in residential burglaries at about 24%, a decrease in crimes against persons at about 8.6%, and a decrease in grand theft automobiles at about 8.7% in the city. I look forward to having a happy and safe 2025. Any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues, comments? I don't see any Q-ups. Well, I personally want to say thank you for that report and Happy New Years.
Thank you, ma'am.
To you and keep up the good work, my dear.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a report from... And thank you, MPT, for starting the meeting. Assistant Chief Kane, are you here? Come on down.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Acting Assistant Chief Kane, Los Angeles County Fire Department here for your public safety report for the month of December and also year-end reports for 2024. So for the month of December, there were 967 total calls for service. There were 22 fires in the city with a makeup of three building/ cooking fires resulting in very minimal damage due to the first responders that were quickly to arrive on scene. One vehicle fire, and the remainder of the fires for the month of December were rubbish and trash-related, and five of those fires were involved persons experiencing homelessness. We had 724 EMS-related responses with 480 requiring ALS interventions by our paramedics. I will now cover the 2024 year-end statistical summary. There were 11,248 calls for service in the 2024 year. 288 fires were recorded for the year, and there was 8,024 EMS-related responses. 5,781 responses required ALS interventions by our paramedics, and that is about a 12% increase from the 2023 calendar year. And that is the end of my report, and if there's any questions from council.
Thank you so much. Any comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor.
Are you queued up, Councilman? I don't see you.
I am.
Okay, there you are. Councilman Dear.
Yeah, I just want to ask you to express to all of your personnel in the city how much we appreciate you keeping us safe, and you have an outstanding record of great service, and I'm glad to see it's continuing.
Thank you very much for that. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Y'all have a very good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to be doing presentations, items seven through nine. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me at the podium. My council aides, are you ready? My Lulu girls. I call her my fearless attorney. We have won so many lawsuits since she's been our city attorney, and she does it so gracefully, and I just love her to death. You know, she doesn't understand the word "we can't" because I always say "can't" means you won't, so we don't put that in our vocabulary. But Sunny is sought after by other cities. When I go out, they say, "Well, can I have your attorney?" I said, "No, not until I'm no longer the mayor. You can't have her, and then after that, someone else is going to want to keep her." But I've watched her grow and become the most sought-after attorney in the South Bay, and I'm just fortunate that she is the city attorney for the City of Carson. And we want to recognize and celebrate an incredible milestone for Sunny and Alshar and Winder also. As leaders in public agencies of law, their work has made a real difference for cities and communities like ours. And being recognized by the Daily Journal as one of the top boutique firms is a huge accomplishment. This honor highlights their dedication to excellence and the important role they play in helping public agencies such as the City of Carson to navigate complex challenges. We made state law with our Moa Homeport. That was one of her first victories. We made state law, and it's on the books today, and other accomplishments also. So on behalf of the City of Carson, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation and congratulate Alshar and Winder, and more importantly, our own city attorney, Sunny Seltany. We are proud to have you as partners in our community, and we are just so honored and pleased to have you represent the City of Carson. And she's beautiful too, isn't she? Come on over here, Sunny.
Thank you.
In recognition of being selected as one of California's top boutique law firms by the Daily Journal newspaper, congratulations. May you continue to receive recognition for your efforts within the City of Carson and beyond, presented this 7th day of January 2025 by the mayor, the city council, and the 98,000 residents here in the City of Carson. Thank you so much for all that you do and for all that you're going to do because we have some big battles ahead of us. And I tell everyone when they say, "Well, it's a lawsuit," and I say, "Well, I have Sunny." So go for it. I have an attorney. The city does. Appreciate you so much. I love you, and I'm so pleased how you've grown because I remember that first day when Bill came and took me to lunch and said, "I'm going to recommend that city be the attorney" because he was stepping down. We had a nice conversation.
I remember.
I won't divulge it all, but she has not let me down. If the attorneys and people know, I always let people know what I think.
You do?
I do.
You just let me know what you think five minutes ago.
Nothing has changed. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you. I'll be very quick. It's been the greatest honor to serve this community, to serve the city, and this award, Carson is a big part of it. You were one of our first clients when the doors of the Alshar and Winder opened. You have trusted us. You have allowed us to represent you with your complex matters, and it's just been a great honor. Our attorneys have all trained. This is the boot camp of attorney training, and because of your fearlessness, because of your policies, because of the fact that you don't ever surrender, we've had the opportunity at the firm to actually grow and get such an award. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, council, and the city and the residents. I love this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is so sweet. Thank you.
Our next certificate of recognition is for... Oh, this is Alshar and Winder right here also. This goes along with that.
Thank you.
That was... No, we have another one, don't we? Or is it a presentation?
Presentation.
Presentation. Oh, okay. You want us to stay down? Okay, thank you. Oh, you're trying to make your...
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, as you make your way to your seats. Don't mean for this to be a regimented exercise going up and down the stairs, but I think it'd be appropriate just because for this particular presentation, I think it's important that the individual that's recognized has an opportunity to be highlighted. This isn't just an ordinary staff member. Ms. Kenesha has been extremely diligent in the work that she's done, so much so that today, she, as you see on the screen, she's being presented the American Public Works Association Professional Award to Administrative Analyst Kenesha Pompey in the Public Works Department. But more importantly, she's being presented this strategic and prestigious award from the principal at TransTech and APWA Awards Program Chair, Ms. Melissa Demersi. So if we could just welcome Ms. Melissa, and also along with Ms. Pamela Manning, that's also going to help present. I'm going to allow Ms. Demersi to present the actual more specified and qualified information that represents Ms. Kenesha for this wonderful prestigious award.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. Melissa Demersi with TransTech, and I also have Pamela Manning with me as well, also from TransTech. But we're actually here for a very special reason. We're both here on behalf of the American Public Works Association Southern California Chapter, known as APWA, to share some exciting news about one of your exceptional Carson team members, Kenesha Pompey. Both myself and Pamela serve as chairs on various committees, one of them being the awards chair, and I want to tell you a little bit about what this program means and how important this award is. For the past 25 years, the APWA program has put on an annual awards program to celebrate excellence in public works by recognizing public agency projects as well as key individuals for their dedication to public works. These awards not only are for exceptional projects, but also are for public works professionals themselves, but also for the leadership and vision of the elected officials like yourselves, as well as our city manager, assistant city manager, and your public works director, Dr. Arlington Rogers, Jr., who really stand behind the public works department team and staff to empower them. So thank you so much. A little bit about Southern California APWA. It covers four counties, and only one individual is selected for the emerging leader in the public sector out of four counties in Southern California. And so she is... It includes Los Angeles County, Orange County, San Bernardino County, and Riverside County. And we're just so incredibly excited to give this award to Kenesha for her hard work and dedication, and it was the most competitive year to date that I've been part of this program where there were numerous nominations, and unanimously, the board selected her without a doubt as the award recipient. She accepted this award in December in front of 400 public works professionals, including the national president of APWA. What's unique about the national president, it also covers Northern America and Southern and South America as well, portion. So it's international, actually, so very, very special. And I did want to share an excerpt, and I'm going to read it because this was shared by one of the colleagues, one of the many colleagues in APWA Public Works that nominated her, and this is what he said. "We are proud to nominate Kenesha for consideration for the Emergent Leader Award in the public work sector. Kenesha has already made meaningful contributions as treasurer of the APWA Young Professionals Committee, managing a balanced budget and offering thoughtful input on committee operations. Her proactive approach and willingness to take on challenges exemplify her dedication to professional growth. Kenesha's dedication to her role and her ability to apply her skills across different areas demonstrate her potential as a leader. Whether within her own agency or as part of the Young Professionals Committee, she approaches every task with focus and responsibility. This recognition would honor her continued contributions as the public sector and encourage her as she builds on an already promising career." But beyond this well-deserved recognition, what I want to share is her journey is really inspiring. She earned her bachelor's degree in environmental sciences from UC Berkeley and her master's from Cal State Dominguez Hills. And she is currently a resident of the City of Carson, and she's so proud to be part of this community. We're so proud of you. Congratulations on behalf of APWA, and I know that Pamela also has worked with you with PWI, and she's going to say more words about...
Thank you so much. I'm Pamela with Allen County... Well, sorry. It used to roll off the tongue. With TransTech. And Kenesha is an absolute light. We have what's called a Public Works Institute. About 18 years ago, the chapter recognized that there was going to be what we since coined "the silver tsunami," where all of our baby boomers were going to be retiring, and what we were observing is that there wasn't a transition for education and knowledge, so there was going to be a big knowledge gap. The Public Works Institute is a 90-hour course spread over two years. Kenesha has been a participant, and what it looks like if you were to walk into the room is there's this bubble, this hum of 50 different people from 14 to 20 different municipalities, and they're all talking about sewer and water and things that they don't know about, but they're being taught about on a high-level, fast pace. And so you have this one sitting at a table just, "We're going to do this, and we're going to do that," and there's lots of tabletop exercises. She's demonstrated leadership in a way that we always expect and that we want, and that she's making your city proud. What we wanted to do is we really wanted to acknowledge her. We wanted to acknowledge you, your public works director, Dr. Arlington Rogers, Jr., for championing women in the workplace and making sure that they get an opportunity to get elevated here at Carson, as well as elevated in the public works industry. So thank you so very much for sharing her with us.
I guess the mic's yours.
Oh, wow. I wasn't expecting to have to speak, but I just want to say how incredibly grateful I am and how humbling this whole experience has been. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't say, like, thank you to all of you, our council members and the executive team in Carson. As a lot of you know, I live in Carson. I've grown up in Carson. My first job, somewhere in Carson, interning for some of you, running around as a kid with a lot of you. Councilman Hicks knows. Mayor Holmes knows. But Carson, I just love Carson, and I'm just so grateful that I was able to be brought up here and have some of my first work experiences here. That's led me to this opportunity. And thank you again, Dr. Rogers.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to share how humbling, and I wanted to apologize in this moment to Kenesha because we kind of gave her a little scare. Just want to take it a little step back so we can kind of set the moment and the mood. And so we told Kenesha that she needed to report to my office at 4:00 on a Thursday, and so Dr. Rogers escorted her there. And in that process, we were actually waiting for Ms. Demersi to become available so she could actually break the news. And so she was in a meeting, so she was sitting in my office, just kind of nervous. She was a little twitchy, and she didn't know what to expect. And I said, "No, everything's fine. You'll be fine. Not to worry." And so the phone call came. We allowed... We got in contact with Ms. Melissa Demersi, so she was able to break the news of the award that Kenesha... so she was able to break the news of the award that Kenesha was receiving. And so I just wanted to share and tell her and apologize publicly that it wasn't something bad. It was a good situation. So, but we're very proud of her, and so we wanted to take this time to honor her. They were, she was honored at the APWA luncheon that we were able to attend. And so all those professionals, as Mr. Mercy had mentioned, were there honoring her. But we just thought it was appropriate and right for her to be highlighted tonight before you as a City Council, as well as the constituents here in the City of Carson. They can see the incredible work that's being done by staff and who we have here, homegrown, and yet still producing, you know, chasing after Mr. Whitaker's status of the most years worked in Carson. So we appreciate Kenesha and all that she's done. But Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank you all and turn that back over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes, we did run around the park together. Kenesha started out at, I think it was Hemingway Park or Stevenson.
Uh, Hemingway.
Hemingway. She was a park rat. Ran around, she was there all day long, her mother. But there is another part to this Pompey team. Where's your twin? There's two of them. And we had the honor of watching these young ladies grow up along with Mike Whitaker and Councilman Hicks. So you're in the family. We've been watching you for years, and we always knew and expected great things from the two of you. And I know, remember when you going off to Berkeley, how excited we were with the fact to watch you grow. So her first job was here in the City of Carson, and I'm always honored because I tell people, you have to love the people you serve and serve the people you love. And you have done that. Your mom is director, where's Gwen? Is she here? She's there. Oh, my. Mike Whitaker? I mean, really, Mike Whitaker?
Give her a little time off there.
Okay, the show must go on. But know that we're proud of you, and I have watched the two of you, and we just appreciate you loving this city, and you live, work, and play here. So, thank you. You may be sitting in my seat one day. We're grooming people for this seat, okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, and I've always knew you had it in you because you've always been a go-getter and always been doing the things that you've done between you and your sister. But I'm just saying, I am very proud of what you've accomplished. I'm looking for even bigger and better things in the future for yourself because I know this is not the end of it because I know how you're very driven by what you want to do, and I'm really glad behind that. So as you talked about in the parks playing around, yeah, because, you know, my oldest daughter, you guys are the same age, so we went step by step through the whole process. So I just want to say congratulations to you, and I'm just real upset, Mike, that their mother couldn't be here.
The show must go on.
You know, that's just not, that's not good practice. But again, I just want to say congratulations and to all of you for what you've done. I can't believe, you know, just keep doing the good work. And to Dr. Rogers, does everybody else know about you being this Black Rose recipient? Just a city manager? Okay, I won't say too much. But that's a prestigious award in San Bernardino for outstanding achievements in, for working with individuals and making sure that things are done on a global level to some degree. But for him to make sure he pushed you just shows why he got the Black Rose in the city where he lives in. But I just want to say to you, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Rogers, we just extended your contract.
How many days has it been, though?
This is our Public Works Director. We love him. Hilton.
I just wanted to say congratulations to you. And I don't know if we, one of the things, I get emotional when I think about people from Carson to achieve something like this, to get up and be honored for the work that they've done, the work that they've achieved. Then it kind of takes me back to my sister here when she talked about that the generation was phasing out, and they wanted to implement a program of making sure that there were people in place that knew the structure of how do things work. I think Carson can take a page from that to make sure that the next generation will be here, to make sure that Carson rolls on and be that great. So we're looking for people just like you to make sure that Carson is a safe place, that the future will always be unlimited, that it will be the jewel of the South Bay. But the future will always be unlimited. So congratulations to you and to Dr. Rogers. Thank you for elevating women on a platform, as she said. And thank you for achieving in every field of human endeavor.
Thank you, and thank you again to our director, who we've elevated from age 14. Thank you for making that decision tonight. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from.
Actually, Madam Mayor, would it be out of order if we could have you now come back down for a photo with Ms. Kenesha?
Councilman Dear has a few words and Councilwoman, uh, woman. Just a second. Councilman Dear?
Yeah, sure. I want to also add my congratulations, Kenesha, and to your sister. I met the two of you when you were 11 years old, on the same day you were 11 years old, right? Twins. And they look alike. They're both beautiful, aren't they? And, you know, I've seen you grow up over the years, and I'm very proud of you. I just am very impressed at your dedication and your commitment to people. And that's what I believe drives you to do a great job. And this type of an award is very appropriate for you, and City of Carson is proud of you as an entire community. So we're looking for great things for you in the future and for your sister. Okay.
Councilwoman.
Congratulations. Put the word out. The City of Carson's it. And thank you, TransTech. Thank you for your energy. Yes, thank you. We can go up?
We can go up, and we'd like TransTech, we're going to do a photo, and then we'll have TransTech in the photo also. So thank you, and then we want to invite our sister down and the entire department.
Sure. No, no, sir.
The entire department. We'd like a photo.
Yeah, so we'll have the entire department that's here from Public Works come also and have a photo. That would be wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We appreciate that. Unless you want to. So your next item, Madam Mayor, sorry, apologies.
Presentation on Public Works Pavement Projects.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this next presentation is going to be handled by Dr. Arlington Rogers, who is then going to hand it off to some of our important staff here in the city. So we want to introduce them. I'm going to allow Dr. Rogers to do so as he continues to plow through the mentorship that he's conducted as he understands that, first of all, servants of all, we shall transcend all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, honorable council members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you some of our interns. They're going to actually introduce themselves and tell us what school they go to and their majors. But why I wanted to do this is that they work so hard, and interns don't. I remember being an intern at one time, a few years ago, before I had gray hair. And interns don't get a lot. And so I wanted to show how hard they work. And these are actually some of one of my esteemed staff members, Ms. Robin Wilson, who they work closely with. And they put this presentation together to share, not only with you, but with the community of the work that Public Works has done thus far. And I'm going to turn it over to them. This is their actual first presentation that they've done. And I thought this would be a great platform for them to learn and grow and understand what bureaucracy is as they grow in their careers, and I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. I'm Gregory McFarlane, Public Works Admin Intern 3 from California State University, Northridge. My major is Business Administration Management.
I'm Mackenzie. I'm Mackenzie Smith, Public Works Admin Intern 3 as well. I am currently going to Long Beach City College for Architectural Design.
And this is the update on city projects for the department. Over this past year, our department has worked seamlessly to ensure the successful execution of our capital improvement roadway projects and the citywide pavement program. Our team has navigated challenges with resilience and innovation, ensuring that our infrastructure projects are completed on time and within budget. These efforts have significantly enhanced the quality of life for our residents, improved safety, and contributed to the overall growth and development of the city. One of the key tools that has notably contributed to our success is our GIS map. This showcases the satellite map view of City of Carson, and the bolded highlighted streets are the completed repaired residential streets. Because of the shape of the map and to increase the visibility, we split the map in half. In this slide, District 1 and the completed paved streets are showcased. In this slide, we present the completed paved streets for Districts 2 through 4. Furthermore, the citywide pavement work began on February 20th, 2024, and has completed four phases as of September 30th, 2024. Additionally, the Slurry Silk Project began July 17th, 2023, and has completed, and has been completed as of July 25th, 2024. Starting with the pavement project in Phase 1, we completed the first 37 priority streets within about two weeks. In our second phase, 36 streets were completed in about seven weeks. Phase 3 completed 39 streets in approximately seven weeks. And in Phase 4, 37 streets were completed in four weeks, resulting in a total of 149 repaved streets. Next, the Slurry Silk Project completed 164 streets, approximately in one year and one week. In total, 313 residential streets have been repaired, with the maintenance being continued through punchless repair. In summary to the previous slides, combined, we have completed 28% of our goal since March 2023 of repairing the total 1,113 residential streets, with the annual pavement program bringing in 13% completion and the annual Slurry Silk Program bringing in 14%. Now, Mackenzie Smith will continue with the presentation. Thank you.
The execution of our capital improvement plan projects is vital as they are designed to enhance the quality of life for the residents of Carson by prioritizing improvements to streets, traffic signals, sidewalks, parks, and several other facilities. As of March 2023, the Public Works team has been working aimlessly to ensure these projects are completed successfully and as productive as possible. Here are some of the projects that have been completed as of today. Just to highlight the first project is Project 1606. This project includes tree removal and replacement, sidewalk and concrete improvements, as well as streetlight upgrades located in District 4. Progressing with additional completed projects, another notable achievement is Project 1735, the City Hall and Community Center Drought Tolerant Landscaping Initiative. This project, located in District 3, included the upgrade of the grass areas and irrigation systems at City Hall and the Community Center, thus providing an overall enhancement and beautification to our city's infrastructure. Now that we've covered the completed projects, I want to focus on the projects currently in progress. The team is pushing for completion of multiple projects amongst all districts, namely Project 675, the widening of Sepulveda Boulevard. This project, located in District 4, focuses on widening and improving the roadway and bridges along Sepulveda to provide three lanes of traffic in both directions. As we move into our next list of in-progress projects, I want to highlight the extra effort to beautify the city with projects like 1715. This is the installation of new landscaping in the center medians throughout all districts. Moving into traffic signal projects. Traffic signal projects are key to ensuring the safety of the residents and visitors of Carson. Traffic projects like 1611, the Central and Diamonddale Traffic Signal Installation, was a great addition to the city as it improves the well-being of those traveling through. Upcoming traffic signal projects like 1657 aims to provide six signal upgrades, improving signal coordination and traffic progression. A total of 25 roadway improvement projects have been initiated since March of 2023. With 13 of those projects complete and 12 of them currently ongoing, the total budget for these projects is approximately $57 million after completion. A total of eight traffic signal improvements with four complete and four in progress, the total budget for these projects being nearly $14 million after completion. In closing, these initiatives will not only enhance the quality of life for our residents, but also contribute to the long-term growth and prosperity of our community. We'll forward any questions to our Public Works Director, Dr. Arlington Rogers, and Public Works Superintendent Kirby Jones. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mackenzie and Gregory. Excellent job. I'll take any questions that you all may have.
Let's put our cue up. MPT, are you queued up?
I'm queued up. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. It's Councilman Dear. Are you queued up? No? Oh, okay. Dr. Hilton?
First of all, I want to say how elated I am that someone from Cal State Northridge has came and represented the mighty matadors are in the house today. I so hear this, you know, Toro Nation every time, from everybody, but, you know, someone came all the way from Nordoff and turned down Zelzah Boulevard over there, you know, so somebody, you know, from Northridge, you understand? I appreciate you, but phenomenal job. And this is what it's all about, for us to make sure that we have internships. And Dr. Rogers, again, I applaud you for giving these young people FaceTime to get experience in quality internships. Our children or young people need internships in government and great jobs, not just in grocery stores. Nothing wrong with grocery stores, nothing wrong with pizza parlors, but they need internships in government. They need internships in places that are significant, and I appreciate you for doing that. While we were doing this, a resident wanted me to ask you a question while you were at the pavement program. They said, "Well, what about my street?" They said, "Well, what about Avalon? What about Scottsdale?" And this particular resident said her streets have been paved, but what about equity, saying, you know, Scottsdale hasn't been, the area near Scottsdale hasn't been paved? I want you to know I'm asking your question because I know you're watching, so.
Thank you for that question. As you know, Public Works has been tasked to repair every street in the city. That we are still on task to do that. We will be in communication. We have been in communication with the City Manager, and we'll be coming back to council with some requests going forward and how we're going to do that. We just finished all the phases previously, and we're just wrapping up to begin again. As you all know, the first contract came to an end, so we're working on another contract. We saw a way where we can create some efficiencies, save the city money, doing more for less, and that's the step, and that's what we will be presenting to council in a very short period of time. So we're at a window right now where not a lot of paving goes on historically because during this, this is usually the rainy season. So we kind of work towards that, but we will be coming back shortly with a presentation, and then we'll be back on track.
Thank you. He mentioned Scottsdale. We don't go in Scottsdale, do we? In front of it. Oh, okay.
He meant Avalon Boulevard.
Okay, right. We want to make sure we clarify that. Don't want to get a whole lot of calls from Scottsdale. To the young people, I want to say thank you, and this is what internship is all about, bringing about our young people to fill in the gap. So you did an excellent, excellent job. And to Dr. Rogers, I want to thank you for what we've done so far. I know we still have more streets to pave in the city, so a closed mouth doesn't get fed. Put together that budget and come to us because we have to. How many more streets do we have in Carson left? Do you know approximately? A whole lot?
A whole lot. I don't want to put a number out there, but we're getting it done. We're probably at about 30% complete repair. Will be done by 2028.
Okay, so we're going to focus on that Delamo Park overpass. I don't know where it is on the list to be moved up on the list, but that street has cost me a rim. But no, Santa Fe right here, Avalon, between Avalon and Main, it's just potholes or patches. And so I know we talked about it. So to the residents that have called me, it's moving up on the list.
If I may, Madam Mayor, you were talking about Delamo, the one you and I spoke about.
Yes.
The city team has already marked that off, so they're going to get ready to take care of that center portion, that center lane with a lot of the damages. So that's going to be done in-house. It'll take a little while. They're going to actively work on it, but we don't have the large equipment that the contractors have, but it will be done in-house, and they'll focus on it laser-focused. And if I may as well, just spoke with the city engineer, and that area you spoke of, right in front of Scottsdale, it's already high on his radar, and I believe we're going to be going out to bid on that.
Thank you. Well, I think we're moving in the right direction, and we're moving fast. I want to appreciate all the staff for your hard work. I know we get kind of demanding, but... Okay, your mayor gets demanding then. Councilman Dear.
Thank you. To Arlington Rogers, were you able to follow up on the corrections or the work that might have to be done after the streets completed and they didn't meet your quality standards? Were you able to get some of those changed yet or repaired yet? You're repairing the street that was repaired. So you and I talked about it at the last council meeting, after the meeting.
Yes, Councilmember, that was on the slurry seal project.
Yeah, where they would do two streets in one day. The first street, they would do a fine job. It would dry before anyone would drive on it. The second street, they allowed the residents to drive on it before it cured, before it dried, leaving tracks. And then there was also a disproportionate amount of slurry in some areas where it would be bumps and mounds. And when you're driving on it, you might not notice, but when you're walking down the street, you see it, and it looks really ugly.
Those are part of the punch list for the slurry seal program, and when the weather is appropriate for slurry to get back out there, those will be taken care of.
Great. And then a follow-up question. Are you doing the overweight corridors last? For instance, I was on Wilmington Avenue. I was coming back from San Diego last night, and I wanted to go down to the new Starbucks at 223rd and Avalon. So I went down Wilmington Avenue when I got off the 405 freeway. Quite a few potholes and rough road between 223rd and Sepulveda. Is that on the radar in the next year?
For the major arterios, those are on the radar. We have put together several plans for engineering, PSNEs, and those will be coming forward with estimates so that we could get funding to perform that. That will take separate funding than the repair program that we have in place. The repair program is more of a maintenance concept, and the other ones are more of an engineering concept, which is going to require additional funding and some other costs that may be a little more expensive than what we're doing with the repair program.
You know, that's very understandable because overweight corridors are much thicker streets. The roadbed is prepared differently, and it takes, you know, much more of a beating. But of course, it's now time to fix those streets. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the interns, thank you for that outstanding presentation. I know that it was your first one. You guys did an outstanding job. You did very well in presenting, very articulate, took your time in giving that information, so you guys did a very good job in doing that. To Dr. Rogers, thank you for allowing this program or process to even take place and hope to continue it in the future as well. Two things came up. University Drive, making sure that, I saw that on the list, one of your projects. Just need to get a timeline on University Drive between Avalon and Wilmington. We have a lot of concerns and residents are contacting me regarding that street being repaved. And you know the one I'm going to leave for last. It's the one when I first met you on your way coming into the city, first day. What did I ask you about the first day?
That was the weeds in the median, Councilman.
Yeah, so we're talking about the median still. I saw, that was one of the things they highlighted in their presentations, about the median. So that's why I'm bringing it back up. Timeline for that to be implemented, it seems to be lingering around it, so back to you.
Excellent question. We actually have some conceptual designs that we've presented. We're working on it. The city engineer is working with the landscape architect to begin the implementation of that, and we're looking at, and I'm going to step out, springtime to begin summer. My boss said summer, so I'm going with summer.
He's trying to give you some cushion.
And we'll start implementing those changes in those plant pallets coming up this summer.
I just want to make sure it's in unison. As we beautify and repave the streets in our city, that the medians are done to, you kind of compliment, as we come through our community. I mean, I love the photos you have of the aerial view of the community and how the city looks. We just got to make sure it all comes together, so we're not having to go back and do any damage to the streets that's been slurry sealed. And when you're dealing with the medians, you may have some hardscape with some curbs and gutters in the area. So just want to make sure we kind of work in unison as we go through the process of doing the actual streets.
Absolutely, Councilmember. I think so, one of the projects that we'll be presenting to you as confirming with our Director of IT, as you know, you have your streets project, you have your medians project, but then there's also the sidewalk project. That's our code name, right? So I don't want to mention what the real project is behind that. And so the idea is to really have all of that kind of amalgamated together so that we can kind of break up everything at one time before we put it together. So it's definitely the option and plan that we, that is the idea and the plan that we want to move in. Now, whether or not that's going to manifest that particular process is still going to be up in the air only because of the number of contractors that we're going to have at one time. Specifically for Avalon, Carson Street, that's definitely the idea because obviously that's along with Delamo and Victoria, those are our main arterios, if you will. We want to make sure that those are all done at one time, so the disruption of traffic is once, not three to four times throughout these different varied projects. But the idea is to coordinate all of these efforts, so that way there is kind of just one disruption versus multiple. So that is the idea, and that's the hope. But do know that our plan is to really break the city up, if, I don't know if there's another better way to say that, moving forward. So we really have our team. They're ambitious, anxious, and we're ready to get started. So to the residents, we just want to let them know, you always want to see dirt turning. You're going to see that really quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, did you? Okay, a request that I have when we do all this beautiful landscaping and we hire contractors to come out, because I'm still having heartburn when I look at the medians that we have right now. And in the contract, they have to, it must include maintaining the sprinkler heads so that the plants can be watered. If you go up Carson Street, there's nowhere in the world we should have a landscaper that's mowing dirt, and the sprinklers are broke. I just don't understand. If you're to maintain, you're supposed to water. And that's what you see. A lot of work went into putting the landscaping there several years ago. But if you drive up Carson Street, it looks like a desert. So make sure that whoever's going to be awarded the contract that it means maintaining sprinkler heads and making sure the plants are replanted and alive. Thank you. And if they need replacing, to replace them. We don't see that, and it was a lot of money went into that. And I know, Dr. Rogers, you're going to be on top of this, but I tell you all the time, it's mind-boggling when I look at that contract, and they're out mowing dirt, pulling, turning over dirt, and it looks the way it looks. So thank you. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Next, we'll have all communications for matters listed on the agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a comment card for Item 27, and then the other two comment cards are non-agenda.
Item number 27, who's speaking on that, Madam?
William Coons, Item 27.
I'm William Coons. I've been a Carson resident for 35 years. In addition to 27, Councilman Dear handed me an Item 13, which also talks about commissions, although it's a receive and file. So I'd like to talk about, get my notes out here. I'd like to talk about the Environmental Commission, which I am on. Historically, this year, we had two holidays. One due to elections. I don't know if that's a holiday or not. We had two election days, March 5th, November 5th. On these two days were Tuesdays, so the first Tuesday of the month, the council moves its meeting to Wednesday, and therefore we do not have an Environmental Commission meeting those two months. In addition, December, we did not have a quorum. Why did we not have a quorum? Well, one of the reasons is, we only have six members on our commission. We're supposed to have nine with three alternatives. And not only did we not have it that month, but for about six months, we did not have but six members on our commission. So that brings up the point of what do we need to do to correct this? Well, the council and the mayor need to appoint more commissioners. Now, if you can't find people, I'll help you do that. But, and I understand, looking at this report, other commissions are having the same problem. They cannot sometimes meet due to a quorum. And I think we need to appoint more commissioners so we have a better chance, with alternates also. That way you'll have a better chance of meeting that month. The other thing I'm recommending, and by the way, the appointees in Item 27, we've had two appointees to our commission, which makes six and two is eight, but we had one removed. Or he was, I think he left. I won't mention his name. So we're back to only one more, seven, when we're supposed to have nine with three alternates. So we're very understaffed as a commission, or staff. We're very undermanned as a commission. I think we're one of the worst commissions as far as manning. And again, if you need volunteers, I can help you there. So that's about it. So I just, the other thing I'd like to see is when the city or when there's a holiday, let's make it easier to postpone the meeting till later in the month.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Be in Wednesday, first Wednesday, you got to postpone it, and let's make it easier. Staff should do it. The chair should do it, but make it easier because it's too hard right now.
Thank you. Non-agendas, who can take those now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Luz Paoye? Oh, okay. Sorry, Luz. Luz? Luz?
We're speaking on the same issue, Mayor. Would you be okay with me staying here with Luz?
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Luz Padua, and I am here in support of creating a commission for, a disability awareness commission, basically. As you can obviously see, I walk with a white cane, means I am legally blind. I have been disabled my entire life, proudly, representing the disabled community and the importance of representation. It brings me great joy to stand here and see so much diversity in our council, in the staff. I would like to see more representation, more diversity with our community as well. I think that we are, did you know that as, in the city of Carson, there's a 24.4% of our population has a disability? And out of that percentage, 51% are seniors. So it's very important to me to know that I am represented, to know that I can feel safe in this city, the city which I love. And it's important to raise awareness that there's a community that needs to be heard, that needs to also sit at the table, that needs to have a voice, a shared voice. It's very important to me to represent not just those with visual impairments, mobility impairments, hearing impairments, and also developmental disabilities. We all need to have a voice at the table. So I very much urge council, Madam Mayor, to please support the development of a commission, because it, we need to be represented. And furthermore, it is part of ADA Title II. There needs to be an ADA coordinator with any city who has more than 50 employees, which Carson does. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing a commission soon.
Thank you. And to the staff, give me her number, we could sit up and talk about what it, what we need to do, or if we're gonna do it, but I'd like to speak with you further on this.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
You want to stay on this side?
Sure.
We ready? Okay. Good evening and Happy New Year, Madam Mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Joanne Hilton, Councilman Cedric Hicks, who is my councilman, I like saying that, Councilman Jim Dear, and Councilwoman Arlene Rojas. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday season. I had a fabulous holiday season. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude for the strides the city of Carson has made in supporting individuals with disabilities, special needs and developmental disabilities. I've seen the efforts firsthand, whether it's the therapeutic services being offered, or the recreational opportunities provided, as well as our stroke center. I'd like to thank Mr. Mike Whitaker, Tim Grierson, and Bobby Grove for spearheading the therapeutic services. And with these services and initiatives, it shows that Carson values inclusivity and is committed to enhancing the quality of life for individuals with disabilities. That said, I believe there is a significant opportunity to further our impact by establishing a Disabilities Commission in the city of Carson. Such a commission would create a dedicated space for individuals and families impacted by disabilities to voice their concerns, needs, and ideas. By forming this cohort, we can ensure that the community's voices are directly influencing policies and initiatives. This will help staff work more efficiently and present actionable items for the council for approval. It's not just about doing what we think is best for others, it's about listening to the people we aim to serve and responding with solutions tailored to their needs. A Disabilities Commission would ensure that Carson's commitment to supporting its residents with disabilities is comprehensive, sustainable, and community-driven. I'd like to especially thank Councilman Hicks, who spearheaded a similar initiative in the city of Compton. He and I had a conversation, and I understand that he knows the tremendous value of a commission, bringing the commission to Carson. I also heard Councilman Hicks propose this idea during the last council meeting, and it seemed to be received with your support, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for this initiative and to offer my assistance in making it a reality. As the leader of a nonprofit organization, Murdoch Community, that is active in Carson, I am passionate about serving this community. My nonprofit provides recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities on weekends, and I am more than willing to use my resources, experience, and connections to help lay the groundwork for this commission. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and working alongside you to make this a reality for Carson.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you also.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Oh, birthday girl. Next, we're gonna have approval of the minutes.
Move approval of the minutes?
Second.
Second?
It moved improperly second. Please cash your vote.
Hold up.
We waiting on you?
Hold up.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Next item is consent calendar, items 11 through 25.
Move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Moved improperly second. Would anyone like to move an item? I want to remove, pull item number 13. I think a councilman wanted to, had a question on that, according to Mr. Coons. Did you have a comment on that, Mr. Councilman Dear?
No, I gave Mr. Coons a copy of the staff report, so he'd have information
Oh, okay.
that he wanted.
Okay, thank you.
You don't need to pull it, it's a receiving file.
I would like, do we have any commissions that's coming to the next meeting, representatives? Is it that time?
I believe we had it set up, Madam Mayor, for you to do it on the first meeting of each month, so that, so it wouldn't be the first meeting in February, but I, let me double check, because I don't remember what our schedule is.
I want to make sure we stay on.
I know it's once a month, I just can't remember if it's the first meeting or the second meeting of each month.
This is the first, so it must be the second.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I don't need to pull it, so it's been moved improperly second. It's February?
Mr. Whitaker was sharing, he's, he'll be handling February, he was stating, so.
Yeah, that would be the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission.
Okay, so we don't, the first, could we put together a list of which commission is gonna come before the council to present?
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll know.
Okay, we'll, we'll put that together.
Okay. Councilman, MPT is away from his desk, can we still vote without him? Yes.
You can still vote without him, I'll mark that he's absent.
Okay. Cash your vote.
Okay, I'll make the note that MPT was absent, the motion carries, Madam Mayor.
Next is item, missed your vote. Special audit of the day. We have none. Discussion item number 26 is Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number 26 is to consider developing plans and establishing funds to formally recognize Gilbert D. Gil Smith, one of the founding forefathers and one of the first mayors of the city of Carson. This item was on the agenda at the request of our Mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, and transmits a recommendation for the city council to consider authorizing the development of plans and authorizing funds to formally recognize Gilbert D. Gil Smith, one of the founding forefathers and one of the first mayors of the city of Carson. Approval of this item would enable various planning and funding efforts, including but not limited to supporting the memorial service in honor of Mr. Gil Smith on January 17th, coming up here on, of this year, creating a public sculpture or bust memorial of Mr. Gil Smith, and a naming of a city facility or facilities in honor of Mr. Smith. This is for your discussion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Did we, first of all, I'd like to deal with the budget for the 17th, and do we have a budget for that? Or can we, is this something that we can do?
Right. So, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we don't have a budget, that's something that we would need to establish through you all, as you discussed, which is why we wanted to put on discussion, so that you can allocate whatever dollar amount you found to be suffice, at least for the 17th, which is, I believe, and as in the staff report, for, and to provide for the food for that memorial service, celebration service, as well as the use and utilization of the facility. Any other expenses that are associated with that particular service on the 17th, that celebration service. I was just kind of conferring with the city attorney here briefly. So the concern and the reason why we wanted to bring it forward is because in any, any other format, resident, council member, obviously, the city, it's a gift, considered a gift of public funds, but because this is a special circumstance from founding father who is no longer, you know, has passed away, that kind of changed that scenario. So you can therefore allocate.
I just want to elaborate on that, because it's important to have a clear record. If there is a public purpose behind a city's expenditure, then it's not considered a gift of public fund, and that's a very analysis on a case-by-case basis. Given that Gil Smith collected the signatures to incorporate the city, given his years of service, given his relationship, and given that your charter city and your charter actually allows certain expenditures, you're okay doing this, but I want the council to be mindful, you can't start doing this for all the residents in the city and commissioners and everybody. This is a very, very, or other elected officials, or other former elected officials, this is a very unique circumstance.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, thank you, Madam City Attorney. So to your point, Madam Mayor, it's just up to you all as what your desire would be as far as the allocation of this particular amount to cover the costs for the food, the utilization of the facility, and what other expenses. I would probably, you know, rely on Mr. Whitaker from his expertise to kind of have a number or provide a guesstimate of what those costs may look like, or what it may be. And then from there, I think, just ensuring that we would stay within budget, obviously, for, for those particular purchases.
Let me say that I'm not looking for a sit-down dinner. I thought we would have talked to Mrs. Smith about what her plans were, it's just light refreshments for, it's because it's a community, and I don't know what she's proposing, so there's nothing major for his food. Not a sit-down linen event that I'm talking about, because I know that's not what she had in mind. So, and the waiver of the fees for the community center and staff, what are we looking at?
Madam Mayor, I did talk with Ms. Smith earlier today in regards to that, and she also has a few people that are assisting her in the process, and they are looking for cookies and coffee and things like that for, after the services, after the repass that they'll be having at the community center. We're looking at the fees for the community center, and I believe it was around $2,100 that we were looking at in regards to the reservation for the room as well.
Councilman Dear.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question to staff, what is your, the city manager's current spending, maximum spending without going to the council for a vote? It was $25,000, now it's what?
Yes, sir, so now it's, now it's $75,000.
$75,000. So, you know, we're not talking about anything near that. But we do have a precedent in Carson, twice before we've done these types of memorial services for significant people that contributed to the community. Back in the 1990s, my former boss, State Senator Ralph Dills, three months after he passed away, there was a memorial service. Also, our esteemed Congresswoman, who we know very well, former council member in Carson, and then went on to become a state assembly member, and then a Congresswoman, one in a milliner McDonald. Memorial service was held some months after her passing away as well. So we do this on a rare occasion, and I think it's very appropriate for Gil Smith. He worked tirelessly in the 60s on multiple occasions to organize and get a committee of people together to create the city of Carson, so certainly it's appropriate. And so I want to compliment the mayor for coming up with this idea, and I would like to make a motion that we direct the city manager to put together a program with your ad hoc committee, and whatever amount of money it comes to, the city manager has that authority to spend it without coming back to us with a vote. So that would be my motion, that we authorize the development of plans to formally recognize Honorable Gil Smith, and establish funds for the same, through the city manager.
It's been moved improperly second, but this motion is just to cover, cover the memorial service, because I have been contacted by some members in the community about being a part of a ad hoc committee to see what we're gonna name the facility, what the bust, and also somewhere in city hall that we're gonna properly recognize Gil Smith. So this is just for the funding, and then I do want to establish an ad hoc committee consisting of myself and MPT to come up with, is that okay? Can you, MPT, to come back with a recommendation on how we're gonna properly recognize him for the long term. Okay? So I want a friendly amendment?
Yes, sir, and I accept that as a friendly amendment, and it makes sense, and, you know, a bust is very appropriate. That would be most likely made out of bronze, so it would be something that would last for hundreds and hundreds of years. And if it's indoors or outdoors, in either case, it'll be very significant. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's been moved improperly second with the friendly amendment. Cash your vote.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 27 is consider local uncontested and contested appointees. To the staff, I just heard from Mr. Coons that he, the Environmental Commission had not been meeting. I did not, because I'm looking at all the appointees, and I'd like a, who handles the Environmental Commission? Who's the staff person?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. That, that would be Rita, Ms. Rita Colsher.
Ms. Rita said we've been meeting. Am I correct? Because you have six, and I'm looking at the five that's there, they've been telling me they've been meeting.
So at the last, the last city council meeting, the council did appoint some new commissioners. We were scheduled to meet in December, however, that meeting wasn't, we weren't able to proceed because we didn't meet quorum for the December meeting, and then our meeting for January was scheduled on New Year's Day. And so, so we didn't meet last week, and so our next meeting is scheduled for February.
Right. And I want to kind of address the concern, because that's two meetings that they have not met, but I know that's a very active commission.
It is.
So when I hear that they haven't met, I was like, what have they been doing? Because the people that's on that, I know, I point, I know, council, MPT has an appointee and the vacancies, but it's only a nine member, so if you have six members showing up, you can still have a commission meeting.
The only meeting for the entire year that we did not meet quorum was the December meeting.
Thank you. So I want to clarify that. And so let's see, does everyone have all their commissions appointed, their appointees?
Madam Mayor, I'm queued up.
Okay, oh, I didn't see you. Jim, Councilman Dear.
Thank you. This is a question for staff. After speaking with the constituent, Mr. Coons, my question is, is there something in the bylaws or the rules that prohibit a commission from putting off a meeting for, say, a week? Because you say you're rescheduling it to February, but isn't February a regular scheduled meeting for the Environmental Commission? So you're not really rescheduling it, you're just skipping it. Right?
Okay, correct. So the municipal code says that if a meeting lands on a holiday, you have the meeting the preceding day. In this case, we talked to the Chair of the Commission, and there was no request to change the meeting date. In addition, there was an issue with staffing. So the meeting that was, that should have happened last week did not occur, and so the next regularly scheduled meeting is gonna occur on February.
I see. So you said the preceding day, it would be normally proceeding, not the following day or the following week?
Sorry, the following day.
Oh, the following day. You can tell I'm a teacher. Sorry. Okay, so is there any way we can bring this forward to the city council? Maybe we can give it, the commission, the option of either meeting the following day, which would be a different day of the week, or maybe the following week? Because I think in December, it was in Because I think in December, it was in conflict with the swearing-in ceremony. Or, and there's also occasionally holidays that stop a meeting from taking place. City Hall is closed those days. So, can we make it more flexible?
I think we could go back to the city attorney's office. We could rework the language in the municipal code and bring it back. But-
Well, through the city manager, that would be good for your staff to look into making it more user-friendly, so to speak. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the appointees on the environmental commission, I see a vacancy by MPT and Arlene Rojas. You guys have anyone? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to appoint Maribel Peralta, P-E-R-A-L-T-A, to the environmental commission.
Council, MPT, any? Okay. That's her uncontested, so we don't need to vote on that. For the human relations commission, we're all filled up. I need youth. For the, the environmental-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may just say, Hector Caladonio has been pending for quite some time. He's not come in to take his oath.
Remove him.
Do you, Mr. Whitaker, do you?
That is for the youth commission?
No, in human relations.
Yeah, he's the youth, oh, no, he's alternate three on, on human relations. So, that just means he hasn't come in to take his, his oath, Madam Mayor, so we can-
Remove him.
Impulse the vacancy.
Yes, impose the vacancy.
Okay.
Director Whitaker, those two youth commissioners, I'd like you to submit two names for the human relations youth commission.
Will do.
Okay, and then that commission will be filled. Planning commission, I know we're still waiting for, okay, we'll pass on that one, but they meet regularly. The commission. Public safety. Public works commission, MPT. And the youth commission, councilwoman, and we have I would like to recommend that we move up the two alternates to those vacant permanent positions. Kyla and Leah, alternate two and three, move them to my two, well, Councilwoman Rojas, would you like to move up the youth commission? Because you have a vacancy. Okay, move those up. One will be uncontested by the councilwoman. The other one will be moved up to the other vacancy, and then you'll just have the alternates. And you can submit names for those two. Director Whitaker.
I got my public works. Kelly Todd.
Kevin Todd.
Kelly Todd.
Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
That's uncontested also.
Okay.
And councilwoman, you have a vacancy on the measure C, measure K. Two, and councilman, MPT, you have a vacancy on mobile home park rental review board. I would like the phone number for the owners of the park, Director Nasse. Said, I know you've been reaching out. Could you give me the, the phone numbers for the owners of the mobile-
We have not had luck finding anyone yet.
Okay.
We're still working on it.
Okay, give me a list of all the phone numbers. I'll reach out, of all the owners.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Relocation appeals board. My vacant position, by the, move up the alternate, Witherspoon, to a permanent position. And then we have vacant, Councilman Hicks, Councilman, MPT, and Arlene. There are two vacancies. There's another alt- relocation. You can, you want to move up the alternate? Okay. Okay, so that one I'll move up. Murphy Witherspoon to my vacant position.
Okay, then we will post the vacancy for alternate one.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is it, and I think all the ones who are uncontested, except the ones that I moved up, they are not, I'd like to make a motion to approve my-
Second.
You have them all, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. It's been, and I'll second that motion.
I, I made you the motion and Councilman Dear the second.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
MPT. Did you vote? Okay, Madam, Madam Mayor, the motion carries. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item number 28. Consider second reading and adoption of ordinance number 242417, approving the economic development benefit agreement number two with South Bay Carson LLC. Second reading. I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
It was second by MPT. I made the motion. Thank you, Councilman Dear. Cash your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor. The motion carries.
Thank you. Memorial adjournments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two lists, because we did not do memorial adjournments at our last meeting in December, the special meeting. So, I'll read that list first. Michael Anthony Ludgood, Usafe Sunny Costa, Nikki Giovanni, Carmen Antez Ablien, former president Jimmy Carter, Barbara Romano, Charles H. Chuck Smith.
That's it? Okay. Would you like to add? Does anyone have any other names?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I need to add one.
Thank you.
Gwen Moore.
Gwen Moore?
Broad Acres.
Really?
Yesterday.
Sorry to hear that. Anyone else? I hope not. Yes.
Ms. Sylvia Smith. She was one of our parents at Anderson Park.
Wow. And I have one, but I can't think of his name. My, and I shouldn't have said it, but I'll give you that name later. You can add it to the list. Cousin. MPT, would you give us a?
Sure. Let's bow our heads. Also want to add, even though it's not, we want to add those 35,000 people who have been evacuated in the Pacific Palisades area due to the fires. We want to just add them into our prayers as well. So, Father, tonight, we pray for these bereaved families that have been called. We pray for their families. We pray that you would comfort them, give them strength during this hour of bereavement. We pray that you would touch them and keep them. We pray also for those people who are in Pacific Palisades area due to the fires. We pray that you would cover and strengthen them, help them cope. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All communications, oh, council members request to add items to future agendas. All communications council members, are you queued up? Councilman Dear.
Yeah, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. And it looks like we're going to have a, a good productive year ahead, and I'm looking forward to working together. Thank you.
Anyone else? MPT.
I'd like to say Happy New Year as well. And we have a great, great year. I'm expecting Carson to have a great, great year. And as you as well, and looking forward to serving you as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my colleague said, Happy New Year to everyone who made it through. Just want to say thanks to the residents who came out to the tour drive I gave at Tri-State Missionary Baptist Church with Pastor Quentin Odom and First Lady Shelley, and the congregation who came out in support. Just want to say, it's a sad note when I got the call that Barbara Romano had passed away. She was a stalwart volunteer supporter of this community, a good resident. It's just ironic, because I had just saw her three days prior to that. And she was bedridden. But, you know, when the clock stopped, it's 12 o'clock for New Year's, Happy New Year, she waited till 1:00 a.m., and she passed away at 1:00 a.m. On New Year's Day. And I just want to do a special thank you to my council A.C.A. Again, thank you for keeping me on track, because right after, right after my swearing-in, most people may not have known that I had, I actually, from the 20th of December up until January 5th, I was in the hospital with my father. And that entire time, so we didn't even have Christmas or New Year's at that at my home. So, we were tied up at the hospital during the whole process. But I thank you for keeping me on track and keeping things in place during the entire process. So, just keep our family in prayers. It's been very challenging these last couple of weeks. But I want to do a special thank you to my colleague, Arlene Rojas. We're going to do a town hall meeting on Thursday, January 23rd, at the Carson Community Center at 6:30. So, residents, please come on out. District 3 and District 4 is coming together to make sure we get the residents' information about neighborhood housing services of Los Angeles County, to learn information about how to get funding for down payments for housing, rental assistance, paying bills for seniors. All kind of services will be provided at this event, along with information on other resources through our public works department and city updates. So, for those who want to come out again Thursday, January 23rd, 6:30, at the Carson Event Center. And again, me, along with Councilwoman Arlene Rojas, who are supporting and putting this town hall meeting on. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes, Happy New Years, everyone, and thank you to the staff. Great year, and I know we are looking forward to an even better year. Thank you to the, the Lulu Girls-
Yes.
For a great, uh, great event. The swearing-in. Yes, very good job.
Thank you. She beat me to the punch. But I want to commend not only the Lulu Girls, but also the staff that was involved. We are going to be doing a wrap-up meeting, I think it's tomorrow, regarding that. We had over 700 people attend this event, which is one of the largest swearing-in ceremonies the city has had. And, you know, that's due to hard work and teamwork. Teamwork makes the dream work. It was just a beautiful event. I've gotten nothing but positive comments about it, and to my colleagues, four more years. Four more years of, we're on a fast track. The train has left the station staff. All aboard. They already know. And again, to, we had a wonderful toy giveaway at the community center. The ladies told me over 700 of our Carson residents were received, I think, two or three toys. So, again, thank you to my Lulu Girls, the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, and all the volunteers that we had in-house that donated, the Shriners, the, my, the, what are they called, the young people for the fraternity? My son's team came out, yep, the alphas.
That, that's right, Madam Mayor.
She couldn't remember their name.
No, I'm talking about for the young people. They call the, okay, but his fraternity came out in numbers to help with the- But it was a great event. Large turnout. And we're always excited to do something positive for our residents. And with that, I want to thank the staff. Do you have something?
Just, Madam Mayor, if you want to remind the public about Thursday.
Yes, we will be honoring, it'll be a federal holiday, so city hall will be closed. We'll memorialize and I'll pass President Carter. And so, in honor and tribute, city hall will be closed on Thursday. It's a holiday for all our employees. National Day of Mourning, my bishop tells me. It's not a holiday. It's a national day of mourning. So, staff, you guys are off, and I want you to mourn. No, but we are, all of our city employees will be off that day, National Day of Mourning. And thank you to the staff for your hard work. And we'll see you, and then Monday's a holiday also, isn't it? Oh, the fa, thank you. Yeah, you guys have been off. And then I think on the 10th, isn't it the King MLK? This Friday's MLK event at the community center starting at what time?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock at the community center. Tribute to Martin Luther King. So, mark your calendars and come on out this Friday to the Community Center. It's a free event, and you will enjoy it. Are you guys talking while I'm talking? What is going on here? Oh, you want some benefits now? I think we- Hope we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.